I think we expect only in person or sign permit, other than that are online.
Um, do you need to do the folder or are you okay to?
No, as long as uh, if nobody's joining remotely.
Okay.
So our, our fifth member happens to join, yeah, we would have to do that.
Awesome.
You know.
Alright, uh, so to start, I will ask uh, for a roll call for our clerk.
You need to call the order first.
Uh, I call this meeting to order at seven oh two P M, April fourth, twenty twenty four. Can I have a roll call please?
Mr. Brad Barker.
Brad Barker.
Alex Disette. Claire McManam.
Making it here.
Doc Pep.
President.
And John Redd.
Well, we have a forum, uh, can I have everyone review the agenda? I would like a, I would like to make one adjustment. We will push our matters from the public below and push our uh, four A business uh, into our number three slot, so just.
I move to approve the amended agenda.
I second that.
Alright, all favor.
Alright.
Alright, alright, so then uh, if you can take a moment, review the previous minutes, these will be for January.
Of the minutes from January.
Now, all on paper?
Alright.
Alright, uh, so we're gonna move on to our sign permit for three twenty dollars. If you'd like, they're welcome to join us up at the table, or you're welcome to sit there, feel at ease. Alright, uh, did you uh, want to speak to us a little bit about the sign business? Excited to have you guys.
Well, this is all new to me, uh, I have a wonderful space in Livingston, but we've gone through this kind of thing to approve or just per signage and stuff like that, I understand the historical significance of, you know, where we are and uh, Mr. Barnett's building, so uh, this is new to me, so I'm excited to, to learn and meet everybody. See what happens good, are there any questions that you guys have for me regarding the signage?
Uh, would you window signage or?
Uh, I think what we've gone with was a final decal, sticks to the inside of the window.
For the first hand special.
And then there would be a sign board that we could put outside. Now, but are we allowed to put hours of operation on the door of the entrance above? Does that have to be approved, uh, A L D? That would also be a final inside door sticker on there.
Um, I think my questions would just be for town staff, where this is gonna fit in our allotted sign size for all three, and then I unfortunately don't have any uh, reference to signage boards on, and what under I have, I think you'll work on that, but um, how was our sign period, are we looking at?
So most importantly is, we were provided a building frontage, so the total building frontage for uh, for the property is twenty five feet, and then if you add up those three signs, it's eighteen, eighteen.
Okay.
So within those uh, with wall, and then each sign is less than within the Stark District maximum you're allowed on a wall, which would be a window. Um, it's thirty two feet, so naturally six feet is within that, I mean, if you go, and then we have for uh, portable signage signs, the area should be no more than sixteen feet, um, and the height should be no more than five feet. Uh, so, a six foot, uh, six square feet uh, signage board signs would fit within that guidelines.
Two, two.
Okay, with that being said, could I make my window signs a bit bigger than the three by two that I had prepared?
I think technically you have to resubmit this.
Yeah, there are different, so, well, can you do just an amendment to a C O A, or well, it's a sign permit, it's not sweet.
You could amend your motion, and how comfortable do you feel with your staff on it though?
Yeah, and then, yeah, just have a, you know, staff review after ten flights and.
Sure, do that, uh, if you're interested in making them bigger.
I'm thinking, uh, the window sizes, if we're looking at three foot, I think the window sizes are about five. And to, to kind of stretch it a little bit, to make it feel more of a window, I think that would have a better feel from the front of the building, and it's a, it's a pretty uh, relaxed design, or you can use. Even the walls that suit, that makes it comfortable, but. So this is two by three, so you were talking about stretching it to two by five, or maybe a, I don't think I want to go down too much further, but possibly a three by four.
Okay, so instead of doing a two on one specific, you just do one on each?
So, I think what we'll have to do is when we vote on this, that you can sound like you're not gonna have any issues with this, but uh, you're gonna have to get in contact with a lot of your town staff, when you have a plan on this. Just provide every the map and state of.
Well, yeah, because you're looking at, if you write up a twenty four C B, just below that.
Are we going to see the uh, the sign chunks, if we can call this?
Still, that'll mean they're very attractive.
Sure.
Yep.
It'll be without the watermark.
No watermark.
I really like, that's one of the, yeah.
It's unpleasant, but uh, I'll be there.
And uh, and it has a, you know, marijuana leaf.
Yes, sir.
So it's a.
Uh, yeah, it's compliant under with the Virginia P D. You're not showing what happened. P H C. Or we, there'll, there'll be P H C eight, which falls under the. Yep. That involves control on, I will, maybe, yes, sir.
The times are changing.
So we, we're going there, over there next?
Yeah. They didn't sound like next year's inventory.
And we, we will welcome you all.
I hear they were showing a, a lot.
Did you have any other question or comment?
Yeah.
I'd recommend a three by three.
They have a mark.
Because of twenty four feet.
So those are probably bad. Cannabis.
Right, taking the thirty feet more to go.
Efficient.
But I think we did some wordsmithing here as far as getting with you.
Okay, would, would you be willing to send something back with the final designs, and then we can work on something that fits within guidelines?
Final designs, being.
Uh, just dimensions.
Dimensions, absolutely.
Alright.
Well, like, have you been, I'm assuming you're Javier?
Yes, I've, I've never got a chance to introduce myself.
No.
Well, we'll be changing the color.
I think it is, I think it is the green and dark.
Clarification would be only colored parching sign, the, the uh, the double O, and then uh, I kind of think it's the boutique dispenser.
Would be green as well.
Okay, so it'll be these two, these will be green, and then that'll be green as well.
That's all.
Yeah, and then you're looking at black. Or the remainder, yeah. So what I would recommend when making a motion would be to uh, approve a motion or deny the motion on the basis of a sign fitting within the current guidelines or the sign ordinance. Um, that would probably be the loosest language.
Uh, let me try.
If that's how you're wanting.
I move that we approve the design of the sign contingent upon town staff's approval of dimensions.
Excellent, uh, for this, may I have a roll call?
Brad Barker.
The odd. I shut it down, I threw it down.
Alex Disette.
Yes.
Claire McManam.
Yes.
Alexis.
Thank you. Alright, did you have any other questions for us tonight, or?
I don't think I do currently, one happy that everyone approves of their design, and seeing Patty that we're coming to town.
Yeah, we, we, we have long wanted our businesses in town, and we're, we're happy that people are starting to come by, and still build our shops, so.
Well, I'm excited, and I think Larry Barnett is pretty excited, Patty's in there as well. Uh, could actually, then talk to Larry about possibly purchasing.
I can get oriented, you are good. Wish the Larry was three point, who was in there before, and I'm like.
It was like this green land, green, kind of nonprofit company, next to the bakery.
Oh, well, I heard.
It's like a.
Nonprofit.
Yeah. Yeah. So you get your cupcakes and you can go.
You may remember that old sports store.
Yes, I do.
Uh, Brian and Wendell off hunting.
That's it?
Um, that, that's the uh.
Okay.
Building in. Oh, yeah.
Oh, okay, that's a part of what used to be Bruce's Drug Store, yes.
Yes. Okay, I remember.
That's what, nineteen, ten or twenty or something, I think.
Mr. Barnett said the building was actually, oh, about eighteen thirty, something like that, say, what was, what, that's not eighteen thirty? Unless they put on a whole new shot. I think they did change it with the sign, I think where the pane glass was, there used to be actual windows.
It's, it's possible, because our body wasn't formed until the nineties, alright?
Yeah. Because it was following the uh.
The planning, yeah. Um, okay, uh, so with that being said, you, we don't have any other people waiting in the online, correct?
Nobody has drawn. We have to, no participants on the ones.
Okay, wonderful, um, well, you know. Uh, alright, so I'm gonna move to, we're gonna move to number five, repair, maintenance, and enforcement issues. Uh, con, oh, uh, actually, no, we're not gonna do that one, um, sorry, uh, we can strike that. Uh, we'll go to six A, discussion of mailings, a inventory notice, uh, to each of the residents, including E nine eleven information sheet.
Yeah, so, uh, provided in the staff report that uh, this week I'm gonna mail out, uh, the writers just informing everybody in the Stark District that we have an upcoming uh, inventory review, and then additionally, I'll draft something tomorrow and stuff uh, and information sheet on the E nine one one signs, uh, so everybody in the Stark District maybe can provide me some input as zone administrator. The envelopes were open, so it's just printing and stuff, and then I'm looking stamps, well, there's a lot of pieces of at least.
Now, for the information sheets, how detailed are we?
Um, I'm gonna cut that down to one page.
Hmm, okay.
Uh, little bit of letterhead, um, so, what is it, uh, witty, I'll make it.
Okay. Okay, uh, does anyone have any questions, problems, concerns?
For the E nine one one, or?
Uh, well, so for this one, it'll be for inventory, oh, well, we'll just talk about, well, no, annual inventory planning, it'll be, be, so if you have a question about the lease what's being sent out, or the, you know, nine one.
Well, just, what is the official date you're planning on sending those?
Okay.
Oh, okay, yeah, because I mean, we, we give it a week to start trying to move it.
Hope earlier, but that stuff came up.
It, it's okay, it's, it's long.
Do we have a copy of the lease which is being sent out?
Uh, do you have some copies here in the?
I'll call you at that one right now.
Okay.
You can give me mine.
Yeah.
I think that the, the nine one one business is going to be somewhat difficult, somewhat complicated, so.
Yeah, um, I, my main concern will continue to be just the sheer amount of sign, signage.
Yeah.
And then also the, thank you, the legality and place.
Well, you also, no, I mean, you're on vessels as well, you know, this is gonna be bounced around for probably a year before anything actually happens with it, who is paying for it, who's, can you refuse it?
Right, whatever.
Now, there's E nine one one signs, and I'm just asking, because I'm now, like, he has so much frontage. Does that count toward his frontage, or is that something separate?
So, from my understanding, which I could be completely wrong, uh, no law. Uh, it does not count towards their signage for businesses, homes, that kind of thing. Because it fall under, you can urgency kind of thing, um.
It's exempt like urgency, not just your address, not real.
Yeah, because that was one of my first questions, was like, well, what about places that already have signage?
Right.
And if they're, but, yeah, um, but we have like apartment buildings that will.
Big, I mean, they're.
Yeah, uh, it's not like, you know, oh, it's a couple numbers, it's significant, so uh, I would recommend we take some time to think about that, but you're absolutely right, anything that goes through a government is gonna take forever, even good things. So, uh, with all of that being said, we'll move to six B, uh, annual inventory planning. Uh, so this will be the best month for us to knock out our inventory. Fingers crossed it's not April showers, uh, to bring May flowers, uh, but just talk with your partner about what day works best for you to knock it out, you can break it up into two days. Uh, when I did inventory last year with my partner, it must be five hours, um, and that was, you know, walking, so you guys probably can come, um, and as long as it's a nice day. Uh, we also were doing it in December when it's really cold, so now hopefully the nice days are a little. Uh, do you have questions about, you know, expectations, or what to do while you're out, or how long? You can get it.
I don't know.
Bingo, yeah.
One to five, but, well, condition is one to five.
Uh, it's, I think it's actually four grades, it's uh, poor, uh, fair, uh, what's the?
It's a four step system, right?
I, I thought so, but.
Excellent, good.
Good, yeah, fair and poor.
What do we do, use a, interesting, or poor, or fair, and?
So.
Good, I know.
When you're, when you're looking at them, there's a few things that will make a, make a property immediately in a poor condition, one of those is gonna be considered the envelope being busted, so if you see, you know, rot on.
Roof.
Yep, roof, wall, foundation cracking, those kind of things, those can all fall into poor, um, fair condition could be like, oh, you've got some like paint chips and that kind of stuff. It's, it needs attention, but it's not, you know, and then good, it's just the stuff above, and then excellent is they just, you know, name it's all, so we painted the house and the. It doesn't have to be that high to be excellent.
No, I shouldn't. Right.
And, uh, what sections?
That is a better question than I have answered to at the moment. Um, on our, on the software that Jack has developed, does he have it split for two places, or not?
No, I think we just input addresses.
Gotcha.
Um, I think what we did three of these years was, uh, I think they did east and west of Valley.
Yeah.
So, uh, if you use Valley as the dividing line, uh, one where it goes, you know, it's part of the van and the side of uh, town, you know, nobody sees, or whatever, and not, and then the other part gets the side that has the library on it, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that is, that was one of the last year, yeah, we added snickerback room, yeah, um.
Sounds good to me.
Yeah.
Budget priority?
Yes, uh, okay, so there's no further questions, comments, inventory, good to go, we'll, we'll meet up and. Uh, so we're gonna move to six C, uh, A R B budget priorities for fiscal year twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five, um. We historically have not offered any trainings that I know of for A R B members, um, at least none that I have been referenced to, um. I think the biggest one that we've talked about is postage for notices, leaflets, that kind of thing, um. Wow, thank you. If you have something that you would like to recommend, please go ahead and recommend it, otherwise we'll uh, we'll live by my motto and keep government spending small.
Where does that come from?
Uh, so most of the town's budget is gonna be coming from food, uh, meal packs, um, they do have a, it's a small percentage kickback on B poll, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Fourteen, something like that.
Uh, and then the town has some tax reserves for that, it's from, you know, you know, donations, that kind of stuff, or, oh, I don't know, that's been a while since I've seen this budget.
It is increased. By a lot of the um, by the budget, so, I, I think that the town will be probably not super willing to fund up any adventures we wanna go on, but uh.
I'd be, um, yeah, so, well, uh, that's, that's typically where the towns funds come from, because we don't institute a real estate tax, or personal property tax for the town.
Several, I think.
It is, yeah, so i- if the town were to implement it, it would be on top of what Alamo County already charges recently.
Oh.
Um, which is a bunch of.
It's a lot.
Yeah, um, it's quite hilarious, and that they still don't have enough.
Since I moved to Spalva, my taxes have doubled.
From Alabama?
No, from, I, I moved to Spalva, you know, I didn't move here from Alabama.
Where, where'd you move from?
Oh, what was it, I was in Florida.
Oh, okay.
But, it was eight hundred dollar property tax when I moved here, seventeen years ago, now it's twice that. We can built in high school. So.
You're not wrong.
I'm out of order, so.
Sorry to find you.
Pretty good with that.
If we have no further questions regarding the A R B budget, we'll move on to six D, street pit edging recommendations. Um, so, to grab a little background on that, okay, did I not say that right? No, I said that, right?
Yeah.
Uh, stop that, get off.
So, um.
So, I'm giving.
He had a D main, it's got, he's very engaged with wanting to, uh, beautify the town. We, a few months ago, talked about, uh, for our tree pits edging, and uh, he went to Lowe's yesterday, grabbed three examples. Um, I want to put some ahead, we probably have enough money to start working on this, if not, it's just a discussion. Um, but since all our tree pits are in the Stark District, um, I thought it would be more well to have a conversation there. I haven't scoped out prices yet, but I wanted to get a real sense for, um, no, or like yes, and then I've always kind of considering pricing on it. Uh, so some of it could be a, hey, you're, you're, you're in the ballpark, or, or, or no. Um, I sent it earlier this day in email, so I'll pull up, um, the items, but we have maybe sixteen tree pits or something between Valley and Maine, and the idea would be put something in tasteful, keeps mulch in, keeps people from stepping out, um, and would reduce, I think would make us more efficient in time on staff and on our budget. Um, let's see, sent something this morning. So, we pulled these to the up for you guys. So here is.
Oh. Downtown on the sidewalk?
Yeah, we were thinking about putting around that perimeter on the tree pit, so when you leave, you say that. Well, that's why we brought it up.
Yeah.
Um, would you be looking for something more?
The sidewalks are concrete, right?
Yeah, and then in the pits, we have, uh, uh, tree pits, we have trees.
Right.
So, we're thinking about having something on the perimeter.
Sidewalks are concrete, maybe some, we should have a material that's relates, like, brick, literally. Instead of, uh, round two hundred and two. Um, stuff, yeah.
We do have a lot of other.
Relates to nothing.
So that's another thing to keep in mind.
There are other options, right, you have other?
All of these are round like this, we've previously talked about brick, so I'm like, ooh, so I have, so.
Brick's too expensive, isn't it?
No, brick would actually be more affordable, uh, in most cases, and if it's aesthetically more pleasing, then I would, uh, take a look at the reo. Um, would you want something like, uh, what was the other one we looked at, like a design like, almost like a cast iron?
Oh, yeah. New metal ones.
Yeah, that would be nice, it wouldn't, it wouldn't keep the, the mulch in there, you know, it's open. Uh, but it wouldn't be often notch. We could afford it, these days it's, uh, usually painted aluminum, that looks like that.
That's the thing.
Yeah, those tree cages are, are really nice.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think budget wise, we're.
Right. Alright, okay. So.
Any specific comments?
Well, also, this, and that's we cut this out for July budget, it's gonna have to be scraped from somewhere, which I don't.
What about brick and clay?
But you would say, uh, brick as maybe a consideration, uh, I think we'll have plenty of time, we could, I could bring back three options, and you guys take a look at it.
I think bricklayer cloud would be a little dull, but what about bricklayer, uh, torches and shocking, you know, hang it. Um, it'd be a little more interesting, if you keep the mulch in.
I'm being cautious with that, though, you know, leaving pointed.
Shadows and some, you think?
Be sandals, small children, um, although if they, you know.
With it, it goes.
Okay.
Parking, okay, because they're like right on the, so.
While that would be a valuable lesson, not to grab one side marks.
I have an encyclopedia of brick at home. Can, okay, they're gonna even break it down.
There's a little bit of brick.
Well, I mean, I mean, it sounds goofy with the Facebook marketplace, or anything like that, has just piles of brick.
That's not bad out here for a type four.
I know the free site.
I've been getting up with local nation, and having them.
We have a pile out back too, I don't, I think. We have a pile out back too, I don't know, I think a mayor had plans for this, but.
We had more than matched to those, we could start using those, not enough to do all the pits, so we'd have to have some kind of.
But I mean, if you were able to do it in a quarter, often you save yourself a quarter of the budget for it, um, which would. Um, yeah, uh, be more than happy to have you bring us some guns and. Uh, you were mentioning, so is this something that needs to be addressed immediately or? Okay, sounds good.
Yeah, a couple of months.
Okay.
I just would like to be able to take back some, would, would be a capital.
Yeah.
So. Something I can take back and at least cut some money aside, if you don't decide to do it this year, that's fine, yeah, but I think the message that we've been getting is basically have it in the budget or it's not gonna, not gonna be done, so, yeah.
I would say that.
Yeah, I see.
Any further questions for, uh, we still have sixty?
Thanks, like, uh, really liked the idea of metal, those metal cages. One of the cages. If the bottom could be kind of tight, you know, that would keep the mulch in. Okay, and but, and if it went up, I don't know, maybe eighteen inches, it would keep the dogs out. And there are lots of dogs.
Yeah. That is true, and they, and they like to.
And it kills the trees.
Absolutely.
Like, something like that?
Yeah. Yeah.
Alright, so, uh, I'm going to now open, uh, number three, matters from the public. And simultaneously, uh, constitution with any partners and tenants. Have any questions?
I did think of one question.
Sure.
Uh, flags, one of those, if I wanted to say put American flag on a hanger at an angle, all of the front of the building, would that have to do for the value of it?
Uh, I think that.
Yeah, yeah, I think almost sure that's not being said.
Yeah.
So I think you'd be okay.
Okay.
I'll follow up, let me look around and then I'll follow up.
Okay.
Tomorrow when I call you.
I'm not looking to be, uh, overly big or anything, there's something, so.
I think it's.
Somebody will contact you.
But we, we try to be as easy going on this with the annual follow up.
Well, it's always the past, past, something here.
Alright, so, uh, I will now close all matters from the public. Uh, can I have a motion to appear?
So move.
Go here a second?
Second.
All favor?
Alright.
None can be opposed, alright, thank you everyone.
I'll stand against the A R B.